Chairman Mark Hites is attending a class in Concord and unable to make it tonight. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask.
The rules will be some Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the platting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Our first appointment is for our assessor, represented by George Flickus of KRT appraisal.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm new to your procedures here, so please guide me how you'd like me to proceed.
Well, I guess just if you want to give us a, just a breakdown of what you've been doing, because you guys are new and we're at the six-month mark, so wondering how everything's been going, and let us know where we're at with the appraisal. I believe you do 20% a year. Have you already done that 20%, or where you're at?
To be honest, on that side, that's another part of the company. There's two parts of the company, the appraisal side and the assessor side. I have very little to do with the appraisal side.
Okay.
But I can guarantee you that the 20% cyclic inspections will happen, but I just don't know exactly when they're gonna happen.
Okay. So are you here for the people that apply for an abatement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you pull that mic over in front of you? Good.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. So we had, it's all from the same area at the end of, the beginning of 125 in Kingston, the Fox, um, paint grass circle in Mulligan Way, they applied for abatements?
Yes, sir. I did some analysis on this. I understand that there was a cease and desist or stop work order placed on this complex. So I took a look at if there were any sales past the timeframe that the previous company used to set sales, or set the value. There were three sales that occurred after that timeframe that did not show a drop in value. So while there is a stop work order, the value is still there, but I think on some of the units that have not sold, there's going to be an increase in the holding period. So most of these, I did go ahead, in fact, I denied all of them. The ones that were just vacant, what was used there was a residual technique. They took the improved sales and, um, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, and came up with a residual value for essentially, at this point in time, the land value, if you want to be gentle on that. And they applied the eighty-two, five-hundred on that. The other, um, ones that had been completed or in, or were, um, in the process of being completed, we had plenty of sales within the timeframe to value those. And I believe you should have a copy of both the sales that were used, and then I also provided the sales that happened after the, in the sales gathering period.
So you recommended denying everything except for fifty-six Route 125, um...
Route two.
There's two. There's that one, and then there was the, and it's kinda hard, I can't figure out which one's which. Lot eighteen and Lot four. Looks like you feel they should be.
Could you give me the owners on those, sir, the lot? Okay, I've got Matt Lot.
Matthews and Joyce are the only ones that you recommended be granted.
Yeah, Matt, yeah.
Twenty-five thirty, LU one and LU two, is it? I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm...
They're not, they're not part of the Oxbridge Park.
Okay, wait.
There were some separate from the...
There's forty-four Brookside.
Okay, forty-four Brookside.
And then there's fifty-six, one-twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, on, um, forty-four Brookside, this is a fairly large home over on the Danville Line. I took a look at the sales that occurred within the town of Kingston. I also went on to the MLS and looked at sales that occurred in the surrounding area of this property. And it looked to me that the model was overshooting the high-end homes. I presented a sales grid on this to support the value that I came up with, and I recommend that the value be adjusted to seven-hundred thousand.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
And then on the other one, Robert Matthews, I did a physical inspection of this property, and essentially the house is uninhabitable. The roof has fallen down, there is one wall that it bowed out completely. So I would suggest that the property value would be a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, which is essentially almost land value at that point.
Anyone have any questions about? Can't obtain a motion to approve or uphold the recommendation of KRT Appraisals and our Assessor's report?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I would note is, if any of you are familiar with the Eight Farm Road, that one, and not to bring up a touchy subject, but maybe that's a, just doing a barn over there. Is he aware of the preservation easement for barns? Is that the same house, or is that different?
No, the one that he's doing is on Little Order Road.
Yeah, but is he aware of that, I guess, is what I'm wondering.
Is he aware of what?
The preservation easement for barns.
His existing barn that's attached to his house, I believe, is actually under easement.
Okay, so he's aware of it, okay.
I know he's been on the HTC.
Do you have anything else you care to share with the board?
I do not at this time, gentlemen.
We appreciate your time and coming on.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good night.
And I do apologize for taking so long to get these to you, but I wanted to make sure that I understood the town before I made any decisions, so it took me a while to just get used to the town of Kingston and figure out what the town was like.
No, I agree, it's...
I took my time and did not want to make any rash judgments.
We'd rather you get it right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appointment isn't until seven-thirty, but I guess if we can go through some of the other stuff.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there's a lady here that I think is here to speak to something, but I'm not sure where. Were you here to, did you want to talk with them?
I just got the application for the use of Rec Center.
That's right, yeah, she just wanted to be here when you'd discuss her application for the facilities use.
Okay.
I knew there was something, sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, if we can go through the correspondence folder, um, it starts out with a, um... Right here, a smallpox. This one was for, is this agreed with the, Phil, are you aware of this at all? For, they're looking to do work on a project that doesn't meet the criteria? The smallpox, the pond on Smallpox?
Yeah, you and Rich sent an email about this. There's an agreement between the planning board, the applicant, and the Board of Selectmen because police fire and highway are involved in it. So since Dawn and Mark were the two most recent calls, they got a verbal on it in the meeting.
Smallpox, the pond on Smallpox?
It's basically laying out the responsibilities for the applicant and...
The agreement looked, I thought, great, I mean, based on the protection and everything.
Yeah, I think it helps all parties involved.
The HTC, eight questions, because, I mean, the Conservation Department, I forget which meeting about, about the road going through the wetlands and how they're gonna protect that and...
There is no road going through the wetlands, it's his driveway, and it's all...
But it, it looked like they were gonna use that to bring Phil out, trucking out.
So he was doing a perimeter road around the pond, and that was where he would be loading vehicles or trucks out of.
Okay, they seem to be sure something was in the setback and...
I, I think that was explicit in the...
We don't have that, do we?
What that probably was, was when he was initially looking at like a five-acre, five-and-a-half-acre pond, he's since trucked that down to under two acres, so there may have been some infringement on the wetlands with that perimeter road.
Okay.
But it gets into trucks, there will be no more than twenty-two trucks daily?
Yeah, so there was a number of contingencies or conditions, and although it's not normally the case with the planning board because this one was so specific on what needed to be done and it was non-standard.
I'm assuming the police detail is because of getting into the, uh...
If he goes more than twenty-two trucks a day, and this is per the chief, then he will have a detailed officer there, but if it's just one truck coming every half hour to forty-five minutes, the board didn't handle it, it was necessary.
I guess the only question I have, it's looking for signatures on it, but one of the signatures is from the planning board, the chairman, and then there's the applicant himself, Dan Parks. We wouldn't sign this until they sign it, correct?
Probably not, I wasn't sure, it was given to me along with the, to go with the excavation permit.
So should we send this to the planning board and have them sign it and then send it to us?
I would, just in case it's something that isn't complete.
Right, that's a...
We should be the end.
Yeah, I agree, we should be the last one to sign it.
And there's also the current, the land use change tax, which I think they have to...
So we'll leave that until, so you can figure where that goes. There was a supplemental tax bill. Let's, let's do the tax credits. There was three different ones here for veterans, and the paperwork's in here, so I'd make a, say we approve it?
So Phil, it says fifteen-foot wide dirt access road, and it's in the wetland proper. So that's what they're questioning.
You don't do a vote on these, right? You just sign them?
I think you just sign them, I'm trying to remember if you ever did a motion, do you have a motion in second?
I mean, the wetland signs, I said.
We just sign the tax credits for veterans, right? You don't do a vote on it, right?
No.
Because they're, what Tori does is she makes sure they're ready to go, right? Or you do.
Yeah, we make sure that they're eligible.
Make sure they're ready to go and that they meet the statute.
So, yeah, so there's no discussion about it, really.
They wanted to bring in Parks in to talk to him.
Okay.
I don't feel that's warranted.
I told them that I felt a future, that if the planning board had something like that coming in, they could invite the Conservation Department in, so we won't put people through double meetings for the same thing.
Okay, and, um, there's a tax, tax bill for the Three Shenandoah because of the transaction that happened. The person didn't get the tax bill, and they've now since taken their property back, so I'd, do we have to do a motion for this?
No, I just signed it to say this whole paper is collected.
So that needs to be signed. There's a facility used for the Cub Scouts to use the Rec Center on July twentieth. Apparently, they've been doing this every year for several years. They do a summer pack gathering. Does anyone have any objections to it?
Did anyone speak to Paul?
It is, it says okay, and it has obviously the road agents, the spy chief, and the police who signed it. So obtain a motion to approve it?
So move, second.
All right. Sign that. Let me see, one for, which one are you here for?
That was the one.
The Cub Scout one? Okay, sorry, it was anticlimactic, but...
I just needed to make sure that it was signed so I can start planning and do everything, so.
And I'll send a copy out to you.
That's fine, nothing, I know it's designed to...
All right.
Have a great night, guys, thank you.
All right, you do, thanks.
Thank you. There's an application here for facility premise license agreement for during Kingston Days to have a deer tent on Friday, August second, and Saturday, August third by Smutty Nose. I think we did this last year for the first time?
There was a wine tasting last year that they...
They also have a deer tent though during Kingston Days.
But I looked at the wine tasting one, and I figured that's the right form for...
Is that all we need from them?
No, what, what we usually do is make sure they have the right insurance, they name the town.
Yeah.
So I usually call it Primex.
And I think that's, let's see, indemnification, harmless, so...
Lynn said, she said that she's, just sent it to me today so she could try to get approval. She is still, they, they're in the process of getting the, um, the license in.
Usually what we do is we contact our insurance carrier before we sign it, so if you want me to do that, I can do that.
So I think what I would ask, unless anyone's objecting to it, we would just tell them we need all the information, we need everything before we can sign it, but there's no one on this board, is anyone expressing any problem with this, if they meet all the criteria? So we can't sign it until she has all the stuff, but, but we don't have an issue with it at this time.
I'll let her know.
Usually they name us in their insurance.
Yeah, a whole harmless, yeah. Both the Kingston Days Committee and the town of Kingston. But I think there's other stuff they have to provide too. They have to provide a, um...
Well, there is, there may be...
They have to have the state license or permission by the state and that sort of stuff. We did the veterans. For those that are interested at home, we did the next meeting for the one-twenty-five building, the one-twenty-four, one-twenty-five corridor meeting is going to be June twentieth. Can you expand on that, Chief?
Sure, so we met, we've had one meeting already, and we kinda looked at the Route one-twenty-five corridor from the Plasto line to Hunt Road, Newton Junction Road as being open versus any, it would be like a left-hand turn lane, like, like you might see in Salem, versus all kinds of barriers that would preclude, uh...
Islands.
Yeah, and barriers in some of the locations, from crossing over for customers and for emergency apparatus.
Um, where's the meeting gonna be held?
Here.
Here at the town hall, okay. One, from one to two-thirty on June twentieth for anyone who's interested.
Yep.
Did you get any backstory on why they ended up putting those barriers in in Plasto?
Why they did what, Phil?
Why did they put those barriers in in Plasto?
So originally, they wanted to put a solid, like a solid fence line down through, or something solid. So I think, as I discussed before, they, we looked at the Florida concept where you could do a combination of both, because we didn't wanna shut off people being able to cross the highway to do business.
Right.
And it's proven true that in the second portion they did in Plasto, some of the businesses have gone out of business, they've lost customers as a result of blocking that off. So they made the change in the second phase from Sanborn's Candy South.
Okay.
And we actually have a person from Plasto that's on our committee that's giving us input on what we shouldn't do, because we don't wanna put our businesses out of business.
Right.
So, uh, it's, the last meeting we had went very well, very smooth. We all agreed upon that we'd have a one center turn lane, one north, one south, the center turn lane, and with no barriers, no nothing, that they could make a left-hand turn, and it makes it easier for truck traffic, for pedestrian traffic. The only thing they wanted me to bring up with the board is we're looking at perhaps a crossover on Hunt Road, Newton Junction Road to make it accessible for bicycle traffic or for pedestrian, pedestrian traffic. If someone were gonna ride a bike down Hunt Road, Newton Junction Road, so they could cross onto a safe area without going through the middle of the intersection. We spoke about sidewalks along Route one-twenty-five, but at least to do lighting and the ability to cross over Hunt Road, Newton Junction Road.
Are they gonna put rumble strips in or no? There's no rumble strips on, in Kingston, right?
No, there is.
There is?
So they were, originally when we agreed that they, they could do that, the state came through, there was supposed to be a foot off the white line. They were on the white line, so we got a number of complaints from residents trying to sleep at night.
Yeah.
As they hit the white line, so they've, they repaved a lot of Route one-twenty-five, and they put the rumble strip one foot off the white line. So is that something the board would like me to pursue about that crossover on one-twenty-five? And lighting to allow them to cross over pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, whatever?
Are we footing the bill?
No, the state is footing the bill. So I can pursue that if that's what the board would like.
I would ask, I think between you and the road agent, I feel comfortable with your determination if it needs to be. I know it isn't ea, it isn't easy for pedestrian, but I can't imagine much pedestrian traffic there. Bicycles, yes, they don't trip over, they don't trip the sensor is part of the problem with bicyclists, but, you know, I mean, you gotta use a little bit of, so, I mean, if you did that there, why wouldn't you, why there versus any other lights in Kingston?
Okay, we'll pursue it.
We have a meeting that's gonna be attended by the EPA and DES on July first to talk about the Tommy Goss Superfund site. I know we talked originally about having DES in to do a talk about just PFOAs in general for our residents, that we, we could invite the people that are affected by it, is this? I mean, this is different, this is a Tommy Goss site, but it's all PFOAs, but where are we at with scheduling that meeting?
I think, I think that's what we can ask when he comes in. You can see the state has filed legal action, as we spoke about in the last meeting, when was the state gonna be doing that, and they have done.
Yeah. I just think we, at, at some point, we need to have some sort of meeting for our residents to get some questions answered, because we've been dancing around this for over, you know, a couple of years now, and I just think people still...
Maybe the health inspector could engage with the DES and schedule that.
I think that would be good.
Preferably in the same night.
We have a forum.
So you wanna try to do that all that same night?
Well, I don't know if there's enough time, because I'd like, ultimately, I would like to invite all the residents that we know have tested positive around the, you know, the plains, and there's not enough time for July first meeting. But I think maybe at the July first meeting, when the health office is here and DES is here, we can plan a forum with them to inform our residents. I think that takes care of all the special events. We had, it was the Cub Scouts and it was the deer tent, correct?
That's all I had in there.
Just for, 'cause we're not gonna have another meeting before then, June twenty-ninth is the DFS and bonfire on the plains. I know the public safety has been working diligently to make sure it went safe, but I believe we've determined that from Rock Remen Road to the State Park, that section of the Main Street is going to be closed.
With exception to residents that live on that side.
Correct.
Or guests going to visit them.
Yep, and then all the, um, at the very least, Bunker and Sergeant, what's the other road?
Steer. Merrick.
Steer, steer is gonna be closed.
Steer is closed permanently.
Yeah.
So Bunker and, um, and Merrick will likewise be closed on the Main Street side. They're actually gonna put a fire truck in there.
Yeah.
And so any parking will have to come from the Main Street, the opposite side.
Yeah, and the SAU has been gracious to allow us to park at the Seminary Building, the DJ Bakey School, and the current high school, and we're gonna be hiring charter buses, not charter buses, but Safeway is going to be providing a shuttle from like, I believe it's, um, four o'clock till, um, eleven o'clock.
So I spoke to Graham this evening in a meeting I was at over there, and he is going to put something on the Fire Department Facebook page and to send out a flyer to residents on the closed section. The only thing that's gonna be an issue is right here at Main Street for residents that wanna get up Rock Remen Road, just so they know that they live up there, so it's not, people are gonna get down here, get stuck, and try to turn around and come back, I hope.
And we are telling people to bring a lawn chair and, you know, enjoy the festivities in the area, but I don't think there's anything else that we need on that, right? Covers that.
I'm dealing with the insurance piece to it now, I'll inform the board later under legal.
Okay. We already talked about the intent to excavate, um, phase two testing over at the, for Main Street.
Think you lost a bet, Dawn.
Go ahead.
Came back clear.
That, I read that, yeah. Did they, did they test where we asked him to test them, on the downside of that into the, onto their side of the pond? I didn't see where they...
I believe he tested the traps is what it mentioned, right?
Yeah, I think that the traps and they pulled from there and it came out clear.
Yeah, but they didn't test on the downslope where everything runs to, that's what I asked the gentleman to do, into that pond, their section of the pond, because if anything's gonna be polluted, it's gonna be, because that trap was full when we looked in there, and it was bypassing the trap, and it was going into the pond, so that was the issue. That's what I spoke to the gentleman here about. So part of that property they own, actually, that pipe comes out through there, it's about that big around, and it goes into that pond, so we asked them to take some samples right there at the beginning of that pond. I don't think they did that. I think they tested a little bit of water inside the trap, and they tested other areas throughout the site, but, but nothing where everything would flow to.
I don't know if there's, I didn't copy all the details for you, I don't know if this would help you or not, but...
There's a whole map, is there, just show where they tested?
It looked like mostly out of the trap and above the trap, there was some, uh, there was some drainage areas coming out of the building that they looked at. And the original, the original request was that they test for MBTE, because they used to have gas pumps there.
Yeah.
So if you read the original thing that they were requested to do, I haven't been able to compare it with, with what the original request was.
Well, ultimately, it's an individual who's looking to buy it, and he's well aware what the site plan is allowed, and he's now, I mean, he has a level two, it's up on him. I think he came before us to speak, he didn't wanna buy anything that, or be responsible for anything either, so I think he satisfies this board with that, and now it's for him to go to the planning board?
I would suggest we ask Andrea to take a quick look at that.
Who?
Andrea.
Kendra.
Does she work for us, or?
As a consultant, yeah.
Mm, okay.
She's gonna know a lot more about it. She's looked at some of our other issues.
I just, what's the end goal? Because my biggest concern would be the pond, but the people that own the pond don't wanna test it.
They don't own all of it, there's actually three owners to that, the largest... The largest part is the gentleman that doesn't wanna test it. And the other gentleman said, go ahead and test it, but part of that pond is on their property where everything dumps down into that pond. So, I would think we would wanna test at least upon the out, on the port of that pipe that's coming out of there where it dumps into the pond. And that is their property.
I, I, I think it's far beyond my depth, so I don't, I don't have any issue having a consultant take a look at it and just make sure that everything is satisfactory in there.
I mean, if it's clean there, it's gonna be clean.
Okay, so, we, so...
I mean, are you just saying though, if we, if our consultant and she finds with the whole packet in hand, she says, this is fine?
She knows, knows more than I do about it. I was just thinking that when we originally went out and did a site walk there, we saw that, that the, uh, the whole catch basin there was full and overflowing. And that large pipe ran out into the pond and it was dumping everything where it dumps out right there. I would think if there's any, any contaminants, it's gonna be coming out of the end of the pump and pipe and dumping right there at the, uh, beginning of that pond.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, it's the will of the board just to pass this report on to...
Andrea.
Andrea and have her advise us.
I think that would be a good move.
Alright, I don't think we need a motion for that, right?
So, you want me to contact her?
Yep. We have a scheduled people, the focus group, Friends of Kingston Open Space. Rushman and Ernie Landry for a 7:30 appointment.
Just, uh...
That one works even better, that, the flat one, there you go.
It looks so small.
Looks are intimidating, yeah.
Good things come in small packages, right? So, uh, anyway, the, uh, the other night, the Rockhamm Planning Commission presented an award to Focus called the James Hayden Award.
What award?
James Hayden Award and Jim Hayden, back in the day, you probably remember him, he was a, he was the head of what used to be, it's called a Sales Conservation Service in Exeter. For many, many years, they had a tree farm up on, uh, was it ADA or what, whatever, they're going over towards New Market. And his sons had a construction company there and golf course, I think now, but anyway, uh, long story short, he was, uh, there for 30 or 40 years. Was the director and that kind of thing, so eventually they made it, uh, an award in his name. And so, each year they, they do it for some organization and so for this year, it says James Hayden Award for dedicated and outstanding service of planning and conservation of natural resources. Presented to Friends of Kingston Open Space by the Rockhamm Planning Commission on June 12, 2019. And so, we, we were thinking, the focus group was thinking that maybe this could be put up down stairs on the wall where the conservation commission puts their things. I mean, it's, it's really the people in Kingston that make it all possible, they're the ones that vote for the articles, it's their tax money that have, have bought parcels to put, to keep in open space. And so, they've really seen the benefit of it, stepped up and done it and we may be facilitated and that's all we really do, we try to find a piece of land. Maybe talk with the landowner, see if they're interested and then we'll put them in touch with whoever and we, and we have money, obviously, we put away each year and use some of that possibly. To, to, uh, protect some open space and maybe keep Kingston somewhat the way it is. And of course, we've tried to stay away from the commercial areas because we want to still have obviously industry and commerce in town and keep the tax base. As good as we can keep it and so we wanna, we're proud that we actually try to stay away from those areas and, and just do other areas where we might be of a more demand for services. Or school and fire and police and all that stuff, so, anyway, so that's, that's what it is, that's really a nice plaque that they gave us and so if, and, and should we like... Who, who would we like to talk to, do you think, to try to see about putting it up and do we...
The Director of Facilities, the Director of Facilities happened to be here. And I'm sure he could find an appropriate place for it in the downstairs hallway where people can see it.
Timing's everything, well, thank you, Rich, I appreciate it, so, alright, I'll give it to him then, if he could do that, that would, that'd be great if you wouldn't mind, good, alright.
Well, I would just like to take a second, I know you work tirelessly, it's nice to be recognized for something like this, you and your group, you know, search for appropriate lands and stuff like that. Um, fundraise and everything else, um, I appreciate the work you do and it's nice that someone recognizes what you do.
Yeah, well, thank you, yeah, and again, like I say, it's, it, it wouldn't happen without Richy, the selectmen, the budget committee, the planning board, all the other people and all of them.
Didn't come with any money though, right?
No, boy, didn't come with any money, but tha- thanks very much.
Thank you. And the rest of your board, appreciate it.
Rich, would be revision of the occupancy permit?
Yeah.
So, on, on the oil, so, um, usually we start about this time of year trying to get the best price for our buildings. We've already done propane.
Yeah.
So, um...
I saw we had one price.
And that was the people we went to last year, do you want us to try to get two or three more other prices?
I, I think we should do our due diligence.
Always, yeah, and then if, once we find that lowest price, tie in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You say we?
Cindy and I.
Okay.
Quickly before there's a war.
Well, yeah.
It's gonna be a war over there.
Could be a war, could be anything, the price of oil as well, it's like propane, it keeps going up and down. We'll get two other prices.
Well, seeing our Director of Facilities, road agent, and everything else around town. Man about town is here, um, we do have a 7:45 with him to discuss occupancy permits, but if he wants to go early... Come on up.
So, brought to my attention, I actually have known this for years, it's time to fix it. On our business occupancy permit and oxy permits for subdivisions, site plans. And even for single-family residential occupancies, I think there needs to be space made. Selectmen need to employ the town engineer to go out, inspect, make sure all the stormwater stuff is done. Site work is done properly.
Including boundary markers?
Including boundary markers, no, that, that's, that doesn't, that's a foul, Kevin, that should've been caught, but anyways. The, uh, I use all, all American assisted living. Dennis sent the Board of Selectmen a letter last September about them not following the proper procedure. Kinda got blown off, no one did anything. Now, we're coming down to the 10th hour, 12th hour, whatever. They're gonna be looking for an oxy permit, they didn't do what they were supposed to do with stormwater stuff back last July and August. It's not ready now, they're gonna be looking for an oxy permit, I'll be damned if I'm gonna sign off on it. So, here we go with another lawsuit.
Can, can we back up a second? Because, um, I, I remember them coming before us and we had, I thought, was it Dennis here or the planning board? Because they ran out of time for...
Uh, nothing to do with the planning board. Once the planning board approves the plan, they're done.
Yeah.
Can't drag the planning board, buck stops there.
But we were told that what they were doing was okay, the silt fence, it was gonna hold just till spring and they were gonna do this stuff in the spring, they ran out of weather, I thought.
It's summer now.
Yeah, they did see that this weekend, did you see that?
I did, and if they don't get a good catch...
Well, fortunately, it rains every day, so, shouldn't be a problem, but, um... We were getting kinda yadda'd and the weather was being thrown as an excuse, should this have been done two and a half months ago? Yes.
Absolutely, it's, it's the number one thing on the AOT plan that they had to get from the state. And shame on the town for not dropping the dime and getting the state involved last year or this year or quite honestly, the EPA. Cause it's a $275,000 a day fine and guess what? The town has to pay their fair share of that too, cause they didn't make sure it happened. So, we need to fix the problem, I'm bringing it to your attention, I don't expect anything tonight, guys, but we need to pay attention, we need to make it, fix it. The whole, the whole system to me seems to be broken.
Well, I think we've had this discussion, there's no code enforcement or anything. And I clearly remember them coming before us and they were very apologetic and they said, we're doing this and everything, everyone was like, yep, you ran out, no problem. And I guess, I didn't follow up on it myself and...
Dennis, Dennis called me.
So, I will tell you, I got their attention last week.
You what?
I got their attention last week, my name's on the oxy permit, I am not going to sign off on it. Line your lawyers up, one of you guys could sign at my place, but I'm telling you better not.
Well, I, I don't think anyone's gonna sign at your place and as I said, they yadda'd us, I mean, they had a good story, but again, that should've happened two and a half months ago. And it's their own fault if the occupancy permit cannot be signed because they did not meet the conditions of their site plan.
Absolutely.
So, what, what happened there, Dennis called me, it was just before, or was it, weather got cold in the fall?
It was October.
It was October, right, Dennis called me, he said, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, I went down and contacted the gentleman in charge, I said, you're obviously not doing what you're supposed to be doing here. I've been in contact with the town engineer and remember, we requested they come into the next Monday night meeting, which they did. And we had Dennis here, so I know that's what happened then, what happened from there, I don't know.
No, and I thought we said it would be okay through the winter.
Again, like I said, it should've been two, done two and a half months ago. What Rich is saying, and this goes to the broader issue of we need to revisit our fee structures and we need to review our fee enforcement.
Yep.
Rich has been trying to do that with driveway permits and other permits that are being, if we're gonna have an ordinance on the books, we need to be enforcing these things. And, you know, this is an example, the cat's out of the bag, the horse has already gone, no point closing the gate now, we just need to basically toe the line. And he, he shouldn't sign that occupancy permit, nor should Dennis or anyone else, but, um... I guess, what I would ask Rich is if you could come up with a, like a memorandum saying, where are we falling down on this and what would, what do we need to fix? In the occupancy permit process in order to make this work?
Be glad to.
And I, you know, I think we always kinda have these postmortems where we're just like, oh, we screwed that up and it's just like, well...
Yeah, let's fix things, that's all I'm asking.
Again, repeatedly, over and over again.
I get, I just get ticked, second I had hit myself with the same hammer.
Well, you do that and then your head hits mine, so, I'm sick of that too.
I guess we gotta figure out a way, because it's like, how did we miss it that we allowed the two months to go, two and a half months to go? And I clearly remember the meeting and the, you know, the...
See, I feel the opposite, I feel like we didn't miss it, that they've been in here, he's talked to them, no one signs the occupancy permit that...
Yeah, and again, I, I agree with, I agree with Rich.
But that puts us in litigation again. That's where that's gonna go.
On the record that they were in here and told about the problems, so... What I remember Dennis was working with their engineer. And they were working through what needed to be done. And I think there was an issue with frost in the ground at the time, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the crux of it was, it was just a flat sandy lot and it'll be okay, it'll be okay.
The water's not gonna run off.
We gave them time on that, but there were other things they could've done to mitigate it, i.e. spreading straw around and I think there was something else they could've done. And they didn't do either of those, so as far as I'm concerned, they, you know, what Richard just said is, they were warned, they were brought in here and they didn't do it. And so, they were told.
So, it, it's not just that one, you can go to the four lot subdivision across from Presidential Estates. That was one where the planning board approved certain stormwater, driveway and stormwater. Provisions in the approved plan, but the builder had no clue, the homeowners, obviously, they don't understand engineered plans. The builder wasn't... I'm not, I won't say he's not qualified, it, it was a struggle. And, uh, again, that should've been, because it was a four lot subdivision, residential only. Dennis should have a, 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 a spot at the plate to sign off on and be doing regular inspections. The problem is, we're not funding anything like that. And you guys gotta understand that once the planning board process stops and they sign the My Law, the planning board's out of it. Now Dennis needs to work for the Board of Selectmen. And when he says something, you guys need to, you know, he's not... He's a very competent, very capable engineer, but he's not gonna bang the table and tell you guys, listen to me, you need to wake up. I don't mind doing that.
Well, should we set up a monthly meeting with Dennis to, or, you know...
I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer, I will talk to him and then get...
Well, he, he suggested a long time ago, in fact, he sho- I think he showed me a copy of a CFO. And the town engineer actually signs off on it.
Yeah, well, I think the short part of this is he's bringing a recommendation, we take our final inspection and add Dennis Quintel's name.
Right, well, I mean, he, Dennis suggested that a long time ago.
Does anyone have any objections to that right now?
Absolutely, and I'm bringing it forward because nothing's happened.
We talked about that a year ago.
Well, why don't we do this? If it pleases the board, as the rep for the highway department and the building inspector. Why don't I get with Rich and the other guys on the Thursday meeting and we start reviewing this process and make sure that we're capturing all these fish before they get out of the net?
Yeah, but we can modify that and have...
We can modify this.
But I think, it's not just a, as easy as putting a signature block on a piece of paper. This is a systemic problem that we have, that there's just this gap between the planning board and the pre-construction meeting and the final closeout. And there's just a total lack of accountability in between those three items, so...
No, you're right, it's not just this, because it's also changing out these structures for permitting and having a fine if you don't comply.
But I think we also need to have a clear process that doesn't encourage people to do the wrong thing.
Yep.
Right, you don't wanna price, you don't wanna price permits so high that people are not gonna do them because they can't afford them. My idea is you keep them relatively cheap so they've got no excuse not to get a permit.
Well, we are pretty much the cheapest on everything.
And then you find the hell out of them when they don't do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, but we also, for the electrical inspection or when you go back multiple inspections, it has to pay for the cost of the inspector going out.
Right, and there's no provision.
Most of the towns that I deal with have a, you know, a permit fee like, and most of them around the Boston area, it's 250 to 350 for an air conditioner. If you get caught without pulling a permit, it's three times the fee.
There you go.
Right off the bat.
Yeah, but so, for our plumbing inspector, that would be $75 if you get caught, I think people...
Well, we already know that's low and that we oughta, you know, up that fee anyway, but, you know, maybe we go 10 times, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying there's a penalty.
Well, I know we already started working on fee structures and changing our permitting process or looking at, at least structure them the same between electrical, plumbing and all that different thing. Uh, but yes, you are right, we have to have some sort of, there is a systemic problem here.
So, I don't think we're gonna hammer it out tonight, I, I think if I can get with the inspectors and start to get at least a framework going for how we approach this more proactively.
Sounds like a plan.
Happy, um, just keep you updated, uh, I'm about halfway through chemo, got two more months of chemo. When I do the radiation, I'll be spending two and a half weeks in Boston, I won't be coming home. And then a few weeks after that, hopefully, we'll do surgery, they'll shrink the tumor enough to, uh... To be able to go in and do the Whipple procedure and, uh, and that'll be probably four weeks out of work, so... Four weeks out of drive, and that doesn't mean the phone doesn't work and I can't answer questions and I can't sign POs, but I won't be out driving around. So, that's what's coming up, that'll take us through middle of November, then we'll see what happens after that.
We're hoping you make a recovery, Rich.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, could I public comment? Which I think would be, the time may be to public comment, you wanna? Public, no, you're just here to observe? I'm sorry, say that again? Okay, so you, alright.
Let me give you a quick public comment, uh, because I won't be there Thursday, alright, I'm going on vacation tomorrow.
Alright, I'm going on vacation tomorrow, so I won't be at the inspector's meeting on Thursday, but just so that you'll know, the last time the fees were set was sixteen years ago, my first year on the, on, on the board. We've had a lot of discussions with the inspectors, not only the fees, but re-inspection. Alright, so you might wanna look at that also, I, I, I won't be here Thursday, I'm sure they're gonna bring it up, but-
I think this is gonna be a multi-week.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to, you, I wanted, I mean, they're gonna let you know, but I, I didn't know if you knew it was sixteen, seventeen years ago when the fees were set. So I just wanted to let you know that. I'm actually here under, um, because we didn't know about it till Friday, so I'm here under new business, so whenever you're ready for that, that's fine with me.
Under new business? Okay, well, why don't we just say, we can take you out of order.
Whatever you wanna do, I mean, this shouldn't take more than ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
I don't think it'll take that.
You got five.
Okay, that's fine with me too.
What do you got?
Okay, well, okay. Can't be a teacher without a handout. Okay. So, my name is Peter Broderick and I'm the chairman of San Barbara Regional School District. Uh, as you may know, this, this district is reconfiguring, uh, the district, Bakersfield School will have one to three. Memorial School will be uh, four to six and the high school will have seven and eight. Now, because of that, um, there's gonna be some construction needed and it's gonna require building permits. Now, I'm here to request that they waive the fees for the building permits that are required for the construction and you can see the items now. Now, this request is only for this work, alright, a little history that why are the school district, um, paying fees, I, I don't know, are you, are you aware how that came about? Okay, alright, I'll fill you in anyway. Couple of years ago, uh, it came to light that Newton was charging uh, for repairs on their schools. Kingston was not, which means the taxpayers of Kingston were subsidizing the town of Newton. Now, they have a different fee system, their building fees, plumbing fees is set to pay their inspectors. Whereas we're under the budget, but because Newton was charging the school and the taxpayers of Kingston, of course, therefore were paying for that and we were not, fees to the school at the time, there was no fees, so the, the board of selectmen at the time didn't think it was fair that we would subsidize Newton, but Newton's taxpayers were not equally doing the same, so that's, that's the history of it. Now, this is a request for this only and it'd be a case by case basis, but as you can see, it's twenty-two hundred dollars. Now, presently, the school has kind of a good neighbor policy. We supply a number of services at no cost, about three weeks ago, our tech people were here for a couple of days. And this has been going on for years, that our town, our school district tech people take care of the computers downstairs. The computer had a major glitch, I think it took a couple of days, they had to close the town hall. We also, I know the police department uses the seminary, um, the English Science Wing. I think a couple of weeks ago, you had a training for the police, the sheriffs and the state police, even though it was our school, it was for the whole area. We certainly have the elections down there.
Okay, so, uh, what's, has things changed in Newton now?
No, no, nothing has changed, I'm just saying, as a good neighbor, we haven't been charging and we're requesting that perhaps, as a good neighbor, you might also not charge us for this twenty-two hundred dollar fee. And that, that, that's, we're just asking you grant, grant the request.
So I can tell you personally, they save me thousands of dollars a year. I started in the early nineties, tried to get the town to tie in with them when I did in the early nineties when we're in the old police station. And I can tell you, I buy, all of my equipment that I buy, I buy at their cost. So they save, all my, all my IT stuff is done by them for free, they're at the station or sometimes several times a week. Actually, they're, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow when one of their head people are leaving, they're retiring and moving on. We're gonna talk to Cindy about it and we'll come back to the board. So what I'm saying is, they, they saved the town, years ago, I came to the board of selectmen and said, why are we hiring someone? They were paying big dollars every year when I'm, when I've been getting these services for free for years. And at the time, the board decided to go with it years ago, so, um, I mean, they save. If he's asking us to waive two grand to save thousands, I would say that-
I think you're comparing apples and donuts right now, but-
Why?
Well, it's not free, our taxes are paying for those people to be on staff.
They, they are, you're right, but they, they don't have to send those people here to save us money, I think is what I'm saying and they, they are very gracious to, to work with the side of the house by giving us their people for free to do all of the services that we need, free to us, where we would have to go out and for years, the town paid big money to, to re, to sort, uh, put it out.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I, I, I really don't wanna go down this road, it's too, too much. But I, I think instead of paying the hourly wage of the two tech people we have, if you were to contract that out, it would be significantly, you know, more. You know, but that, that's really, that's, that's a road I, I didn't wanna go down, I don't wanna go down, I don't think you wanna go down.
You brought it up, but-
Well, I have to bring it up, don't I, I mean, it'd be, you know, it'd be not, to me, I think it was important that, as a good neighbor, we would like you to be a good-
I, I can tell you the time that they didn't do it and there was a lot of controversy over when they built the new school, they charged them all the permitting fees because if I'm not mistaken, they came from the contractor, not from, not from the school district.
That's part of the school bid.
Right.
But it was also, I thought it was-
Where does the money go?
I thought it was at a reduced fee to cover the inspector's salary.
It was, it was, it was. But I also think there's an RSA that gets you out of fees anyway.
Well, the RSA is quid pro quo, I was, I said thirty-one, but I think this is a quid pro quo, we're helping you, you're helping us. You are getting a benefit, we are getting a benefit, so that takes care of the quid pro quo, at least under thirty-one as I interpret thirty-one.
I, I'm somewhat torn because I agree, I mean, we just, a couple of months ago, we talked about using the Chase Field for this baseball game and we were shocked that they were gonna charge a hundred fifty dollars and it's since been waived and you'll, the school district is letting us use parking for June twenty-ninth of that and for all of Kingston days without anything. I think this, when this, what you just explained to me, I didn't know, um, the agreement that came to be, why we're charging, it was sound reasoning for that purpose, why should one town not do it and the other do it? But I do think we do get stuff out of the school district, I, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would, you know my feeling.
I'm opposed.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we waive fees for the, for the school, for, uh, I think it's twenty-two hundred total.
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
Twenty-two hundred dollars, I'll second it.
Alright, well, okay, for discussion purposes, you, you second it, that, that makes it a one-time thing, what happens, the, is this a one-time thing or are you gonna, or do you wanna say?
No, let them come back.
I think they need to come back because what if another big facility does come into play, which we don't think it will.
I think take it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, that, I mean, this is twenty-two hundred, if it was a, you know, we have paid any number of fees over the last few years, school district, I mean, um, you know, twenty-five, thirty-dollar fee.
Money's tightened this year's budget?
You know, but, well, it's just that, you know, it, it came about because of the amount of money, I said, you know what, I'll go down and ask.
So, just, just one incident, when your computer went down for a week, not only was it out of warranty, but he fought to get it warranted, is that correct? For, for that-
Yeah, I think Cindy worked with him to, to, with the warranties.
That itself was thousands of dollars, I mean, so.
The other thing we could do is put a dollar amount and say, come back if it's over such and such a dollar. Waive anything under, just so, you know, like these sixty-dollar. But, the other side of that is like with the new high school, we covered the cost to the inspectors.
Right.
So that would be a smart thing to do, you know, this is pretty much non-inspector type stuff, one trip, maybe. Maybe.
Well, I mean, if we, again, this is dropped, I, I, I found out about this Friday and your meeting today, and I'm going on vacation tomorrow and I didn't wanna wait two more weeks actually, because I'm coming in that night because we've got the EPA people coming in, you know.
Phil, you have anything more to add?
There's still an inspection that has to take place, we have to physically send a guy and we have to reimburse him for his time to go do that, so we're just eating that for the school?
Well, we're eating that for the school, but we've saved a lot of money.
But we're gonna continue to save money.
I, I think, I, I ultimately think, like, I mean, no different than, they're gonna have to pay a janitor to go enter the trash and cut the, cut the field and pick up the field and they waived that fee alone, which is that, and was, you know, I think it's a, there's gotta be a give and take.
I, I look at it this way, I help fire department every day, I help the highway department-
You help everybody.
We're, we're all, all this money is coming, coming from the same pot, the taxpayer. So I think the more that we charge each other, it doesn't make it beneficial to the taxpayer. If I can do something to help another agency within the community or any agency, I do that. And you, and you do it to try to save the taxpayer money and, and that's, I'm in the schools all, all the time, you've seen it.
I'm gonna remember that when we talk about, you know, details, you know, charging utilities.
We do charge, well, they're an outside, they're an outside agency, they charge us, we charge them.
The rate pays, anyways, I'm gonna call for the vote, um. So there's a motion on the table to waive the two, two, two thousand two hundred dollars, one-time deal, that's all what the motion was.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll, I'll oppose. I'm gonna withstand, but it passes.
So that's two, one and one, so it passed, can I correct? Um, something you said, Kevin, um, about a ballgame on Chase Field, is there gonna be a ballgame on Chase Field?
Yes.
The only reason I ask that is today, I got the insurance rider because the fireworks are gonna be there and the school, of course, needs to be named as an insured.
Yeah.
So this is a Kingston Days thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I just, when I see Cindy tomorrow, say, can you give me one for that too?
But there's gonna be a new policy because it isn't right, that's what I'm gonna talk to the board about later. You're gonna see a new policy coming from our insurance carrier, it isn't right.
Whatever, we just, you, 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 you do them all the time, right, I mean, this is a, this is a, a non thing, it's just that I didn't know about it, so. I know we have a new business administrator, I don't know if you're aware of that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um, and, and he's kinda going by the book, so he told me if could I pick up.
Well, is there an issue, because I'm reading this on the, on the, for the fireworks?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because you're gonna use, you, you're gonna use Chase Field, right, so-
Bakersfield.
A Bakersfield, I'm sorry, you're gonna use Bakersfield School, right, so of course the town, I mean, the school district has to protect themselves.
They, they have, all of the things I've turned into the school for permission on, the beer fest, the three-twenty-fifth, the use of all school property has been approved and they've got all the permits back.
I'm just looking at this though, this is, it says right here, on this as day before, okay, I, although I'm a little nervous about not knowing if the town has insurance to set off fireworks at school district property.
So I'll discuss that with the board, as I told you earlier, that's something I wanna talk to the board about.
No, I, I'll just ask Cindy for it tomorrow, I just, I didn't know about the ballgame and where it just happened to today, get an insurance policy for the fireworks.
It's on the fancy new, uh, Nichols Memorial sign, when you're driving out.
Pete, one more question, when are you going on vacation?
Tomorrow, when I leave here, I'm on vacation, please do not call me, we'll take care of that, uh, situation down when I get back.
I, I'll, I'll save you an email, but your name did come up earlier, July first, we have a meeting with DES and EPA for the Tommy Goss site.
Yes.
About that and I assume you're gonna be here.
Oh, yes, yeah, and, and, and I was the one, not to take away from Susan, but I was the one who coordinated with them and it's July first, I believe. And the DES from, um, Boston will be coming up.
Alright, well, could you use the word coordinate because we'll be tasking you at that meeting, we're talking with DES, but we talked way back when, a few months ago, about having a forum here on PFOAs for the people that do have contamination or any resident of Kingston has any questions on it.
Right, well.
So we'd like to schedule something with DES and give it, have advance notice so we can notify people that we would like to hold a forum on PFOAs to educate our residents.
Whether the state does it or the fed, we can bring that up on the first, ask them, you know, if they're agreeable to that. Because that's gonna be the next time I see them. This all started, I don't know if you know, there was a forum for the Country Pond people.
With the like.
That's why that came up.
It was a change in by them, it was a different group, but I'm saying-
Sure, no, I understand that.
The selectmen are asking, or directing you to work with DES and hold a forum here.
Oh, okay, now, that I didn't understand, okay, I get it now, alright.
Where we could have advanced notice, not two weeks' notice, July first doesn't give residents good-
No, 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 this July first, I set that up a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's something else, but honestly.
That's strictly for you.
Yep.
Okay, and anybody else who wants to come, and she said she'd put it, Susan said she'd put it on the, uh, on the website, so, anyone else. And I will get in touch with some people at the Country Pond if they wanna come, this Country Pond Association also is Newton, you know, so.
We can talk about July first, but we would like you to coordinate having a forum for our residents.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, you know, I, 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 I'd like to get this behind us first.
Okay. Anything else for us?
No, that's good, thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Less than ten minutes?
Over.
Wow, it's on, back in a little while.
But no one was counting. That goes through all of that, um, old business, Solar at Landfill, discussion.
I provided you the information that Mark had asked for last time, about other companies that do it, um, do that, the larger scale.
For those that aren't aware, the governor did veto
Right.
that bill. Um, whether it's gonna be upheld or not is a different story, yet to be determined, but I do, um, so we can't do anything anyways until that happens and to be honest, I would support the governor and, you know, there's no reason that the utilities have to pay, what, what it all comes down to is they want the utilities to pay retail price on that power when it's not paid to the utilities and that gets passed on to the rate payers, that's ultimately where it goes. It should be wholesale, I don't know why it's written that way, but that's why the governor did do that, so. Did you ever, do you reach out to, um, revision if they would be interested in doing something?
And they would be.
They would be?
Yeah, that's in your information that I printed out for you.
Okay, well, it's not that we can do until we figure out what the legislation does with it, but that's ultimately where it rests.
And it would also have to go to a town vote, you're gonna enter into anything like that.
Anyone else have anything to add on that?
Solar, questions?
You're gonna charge them for building permits or what?
Um, there was a compliance request from the planning board.
Uh, Fieldstone Masonry has been contacted numerous times to come in and get a site plan. They have not thus far, um, our own building and specifically, they were told that one week and then our building inspector noticed multiple trucks coming out of that location, hauling equipment out of, or hauling material out of there. So the planning board voted to kick this to the slums for an enforcement action.
Did they ever come in and see anybody in the planning board office?
They spoke with, uh, Glenn Greenwood, the guy yeah, yeah'd him, never. He was told that there is nothing on file for a site plan for that site, there's nothing that can legally be done on that site and yet they're continuing to haul material out.
Site was closed four years ago?
Yeah, and it was restored-ish, but it has since been reopened, so, there's no stormwater management, there's none of that.
Can I ask for what the vote was for the planning board, do you know that? Okay, it was majority, obviously, okay.
So the planning board wants us to take enforcement action?
Yes.
They wanna cease and desist, is what they're asking for.
What needs to take place because they clearly don't care.
And this goes right for what Rich was talking about, is that's the kinda thing we need to enforce immediately.
Um, so, anyone make a motion for that, to?
Make a motion to issue a cease and desist to the owner of-
Thirty-four.
Tax map R two dash thirteen.
Speaker.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, so Susan, if you could do that, the only thing I would ask is whether we can do it on here or not, if it's gonna be a vote, I'd like to know what the vote was, like, have a, Susan, if you can talk to the planning board. Like, have a, Susan, if you can talk to the planning board, just...
We can get it from the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the minutes.
No, I'm just saying, no on the form, that it would have a check-off box to say it was a, the count for the vote.
I, this is two weeks ago, but I believe it was unanimous, but...
I'm not worried about it, I just, I'd like to see...
Cease and desist last week, I was down on one-twenty-five, and they were dropping boulders the size in the middle of highway, where they had to send out a piece of equipment. So we had to physically shut down Route one-twenty-five for small, for a short period of time, well, they brought a small excavator out and cleared the highway of boulders that size.
This is that site?
Up, down, a little bit further down, but they fell out of the dump truck, and I was told it was that company.
Oh, interesting.
This has been, I think numerous people have mentioned, I, I don't know if you spoke to them, but I know the road agent did.
I did.
I saw trucks coming out of there the other day.
Yeah, I did, I spoke to them, and they were told to come here, because they didn't have anything on record with the planning board.
You know, if you can send out as soon as possible.
Do you want, usually, I need your signatures, do you want me to just have you come in and sign, or...
You don't have electronic signatures, huh, of us?
We don't have an office coming.
Yeah, you're right, that'd be crazy, if you can craft a letter, and when we all get a chance, you can send out an email, and we'll all come in and sign it.
Yeah, okay.
And then we could do it, I'd like to do it differently, a couple of different ways, to the on-on-record-to-be-certified mail, and then have the police deliver.
Do it in hand.
And in hand.
That's what we usually do.
There's a code enforcement issue for Depot Road, did we get a complaint on it, or?
Yes, a couple of people apparently came into the office, I'm not sure exactly where it came from, but there's a little note on front, there's a trailer there that people are living in, a lot of cars parked down the road, is what we were told.
Are you aware of anything, is this something for non-public, or? Alright, so we'll save that for non-public. So we have non-public for that, we have a non-public for, what was the other thing?
Insurance issues.
Insurance.
Need to talk about one personnel matter.
Was that, is that the thing that's in here?
Yes.
Yep. Then we have a legal for property.
Yep.
Alright, committee liaison reports. I'll start out adding, I, I don't know how the, what's the, what's the pleasure, but I know I received three different complaints on the new sign that went up on the museum.
What for?
For the verbiage on the sign saying Nichols Memorial Library. There has been one nine, there's been one case in town, specifically for the library, where someone was passing through and called nine-one-one and sent them at the library. Is that factual? And there was a delay in getting it to the person, and then, I don't know where it happened, but I've been told, whether it's accurate or not, I've been told that it was a vote of this board, or the Board of Selectmen. That that was to be called the Nichols Memorial Building.
Well, I think we all missed that when they presented that here, because...
Did we see that sign?
Yeah, he brought in a whole mock-up of it, and we all voted for it, so...
I wasn't here that one.
Sure you were.
No, that was the one where we talked about the granite and came back with the wood.
Actually, he wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
So what I can do, I can check with my nine-one-one rep again, and I'll send a picture off to her to get some input.
I guess I'd be, well, it's, it's unfortunate if it did come before the board, I never saw it, but I guess my only question is, does anyone know of, supposedly, I was told a vote was made, that that's to be called the Nichols Memorial Building?
I don't know.
I can research it.
We spoke about it last meeting, didn't we?
No, I think a previous, when the library moved, or something.
We had a discussion about it again last week, or two weeks ago.
Was it?
Yeah.
I know I spoke to him quite some time ago about, it couldn't be called the library, and they were gonna name it something else. I'll, I'll double-check, I can get back to the board if you want.
I, I don't know if, I mean, it's actually very small, but it just says it, and I know, I was told, we actually had an incident where someone said...
Right, but something over it, or they can take the decal off?
Well, it might...
It's not a decal, 'cause I looked.
It, it may be suitable for nine-one-one, I'll have to check with the rep, and I can let the board know if you want.
So...
So was it painted?
It's screen printed on.
It's just a PVC sign.
Yeah, but don't they just peel off?
No, I thought, I looked, it's not vinyl, that is on a, on a piece of MDO, it's like, it's, it's actually...
We should have asked when he was here.
This came up, I wanna say...
I can, give you one second for other public comment?
Why don't someone just know the chief's location, if they call it with a cell phone, why would a guy in a room have access to the chief's location?
They do sometimes, but sometimes they'll give them the physical address, like I'm out in front of number twenty-one Main Street, or I'm, I'm reading a sign now, it says, you know, I'm at the Nichols Memorial Library, or I'm at the Kingston Community Library, or Carrington Plaza.
If you're at a, if you're at a building, the building says library, and you call nine-one, say, I'm at the library, they're gonna send you nine...
They may not have been a resident, they may not have known what street they were on.
So it was a couple of years ago, I believe, or at least a year, that nine-one-one did look at this, so I'll call, we're back again, and get the information if you want.
That way we know. Well, that sign should be nice, we'll do it twice.
Yeah, Shore Drive and West Shore Drive, which has caused some issues a few times.
I, I, I don't know where we're at in this town, but I could tell you, in the town of Exeter, they are renaming streets in numbers that sound alike.
Was it twenty or something?
We did, we, we changed the number, in fact...
North Dambler Road, yeah.
North Dambler Road, North Road, North Dambler Road, yeah.
There are a lot of them.
So, the new development that the gentleman's trying to put in, up on one oh seven, it took him, I think it was either three or four names for a, for the senior housing in there. Because some of them were so close to, not only in Kingston, but...
But East Kingston.
The courthouse, was one of the names.
Alright, any other liaison?
I think you got the bulk of the planning board, from all the questions I answered. We were committed, or we were granted a rehearing on the apartments over the golf course.
Yeah, we're all here, thank you for your...
Just letting everybody else know. To the good of the public.
Motion to approve minutes?
Make a motion to approve both public and non-public minutes for June third, twenty nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, I believe we have several non-public, so if there's no other board business and no one from the public for comment, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public for personnel, legal. And, what was the other?
It's, I think, C, for matters that may affect the reputation of a person other than this board.
Yeah.
So move. Second. Second, Richard. Yes?
Favor?
Oh, yes, okay, that would conclude tonight's televised portion, have a great time, and look forward to seeing people for the bonfire on June twenty-nine.